Good evening. And welcome. Agenda for combined meeting, 5:00 PM, October 4th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta.
Here.
Ms. Douglas.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Ms. Sabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti. Ms. Spinelli.
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing time, place, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vesta Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, we would like to welcome the DePaulito students and the Rossi students to come up for the flag sleuth. Step to the front of the stage. We have Mr. Holmes coming down and Ms. Cottis Patti, and they have some certificates for you. And thank you very much for coming out this evening. Thank you very much. Let's have another round of applause for our flag sleuters. Scott, do we have a resolution for executive session?
No, we do not.
At this time, I will hand it over to Mr. Frye for our special presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. There are two presentations tonight. First, I will recognize four VHS students for their work with the city. And then, Mr. Marchi and Ms. Ziegler will give an update on the instructional coaching model. First, VHS students in Mr. Albert Porter's African-American Experience class was a driving force in working with the City of Vineland, City Council, to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with a street dedication in his honor. The dedication ceremony will be held October 11th at 10:00 AM at the Carl V. Arthur Center, 187 North Third Street, Vineland. Tonight, we thank the following students for their hard work and commitment to this effort: Kason Dixon, Derek Tribbit, Isabel Mayers, and Ashley Denshaw. Can we have a round of applause? And if the students are available, if they're here tonight, can Mr. Porter and the students come up for a certificate and pictures? Great work, great work. Congratulations. Good job, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Marchi, Ms. Ziegler.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for allowing us time to share our instructional coaching model. As you know, instructional coaches are new this year to our elementary schools. Ms. Ziegler and her team, they have been working diligently to create our instructional coaching model. We are excited to share it with you this evening. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ziegler and her team.
Hello, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. So as Mrs. DiMarchi mentioned, I am here joined with five eights of our fabulous instructional coaching team. Well, actually, five nines, because we also have somebody who works in middle school and high school. So tonight, I have Linda Fields here, Melissa Silio, Anita Burton-Azzi, Dana Spesiali, and Angeline Tedesco. We're missing a couple, but obviously, you know, other family commitments. It's hard to get the whole gang, but I'm quite impressed with the showing we have here tonight. But it's so important for us to be able to have this time and just give you a little bit of an update of kind of what our coaches have been busy doing so far this school year. So first and foremost, we started our work over the summer by meeting many, many times, right? Summer was great. And we had the opportunity to put together what we're referring to as our Instructional Coaching Manual. So guided by the work of Jim Knight, he is an expert in the field of instructional coaching. He's been an instructional coach for a long time. They have, he has a ton of books and webinars and so on out there. And we felt that his work and framework really aligned with kind of where we were going and saw the vision as far as our coaching program for here in Vineland. So when we utilized this framework, we kind of started to dig into it. We're still working on it, right? Working on reading through the book, our online course that we purchased so we can all kind of have these professional conversations together as we continue to evolve throughout this school year. But the dedication and commitment that they've shown so far just to jumping into this role and really just kind of getting started with the school year has been amazing. I've been so lucky to work with such a dedicated group of professionals. So here's the link down here on the slides for you. I know Mrs. DiMarchi has shared it at the last board meeting or maybe two before. But in case you are curious and you want to take another look, it's right there for you. Like I said, I think it's a working document, something that's going to be added to as we kind of grow and evolve throughout this school year. So the first month and kind of what we've been up to so far, first and foremost, building relationships with teachers. Now again, I'm lucky that the professionals here with me have worked in their schools for quite a while so far. They have many relationships across all their schools. But of course, this is a new endeavor, stepping into a role outside of the classroom and, you know, supporting peers in a different way. So really, that relationship piece has been the foundation of everything that I see to come throughout the school year. So they've been spending a lot of time just supporting teachers in really any way possible that is helpful for a teacher at this point. We're kind of laughing at my third bullet, but troubleshooting issues with HMH and our new ELA curriculum and digital platforms has taken up quite a lot of time. However, they've also been in and out of classrooms supporting those, you know, beginning-of-school-year routines, things around classroom management, creating a plethora of resources, which we'll share just a couple for you in a minute. And of course, modeling lessons in the classrooms. You know, they're already jumping in with teachers who are excited to, you know, learn and hear from somebody who's also been in the classroom and been in the trenches, just like they have. So, if I could ask... Yep, you want to come up first? Perfect.
I'm Dana Spesiali. I'm the coach at Rossi. So one of the things that the other coaches and I have been working on is a Coach's Corner newsletter that we send out to our staff weekly. We believe in two major things: communication and collaboration. So this is just a way to kind of keep in touch with the staff every week. And in this example that you see in the slideshow, we have a link for the teachers to sign up for coaching. And there's different options. They can ask us to come in and sit in on a lesson or give them a modeled lesson or look at their data, analyze their data, form SGOs, etc. There's also a Monday morning check-in that we send out every week to kind of just take a survey of the culture. What's going on? How are the teachers feeling about the upcoming week? And one of the options is like, "Come help me ASAP, I need you right now." We also give them some informational resources, some things that are coming up in the upcoming week or the upcoming months. We also give them resources. We share articles and podcasts for them to listen to. And in my Coach's Corner, I like to include a staff shout-out. One of the teachers last week really went out on a limb with taking a risk of trying something new in her classroom. And I was really proud of her for inviting me in and asking for feedback. And we reflected on the lesson together. And that's exactly what we should be doing as professionals. So this is how we keep in touch with our staff.
Good evening. Linda Fields, instructional coach from Dane Barcy. Another aspect of coaching has been helping with the implementation of inter-reading in the K-5 elementary schools. So we have been making instructional how-to videos to aid our teachers in the movement between the tabs and to help them better implement the program. What has been nice is the collaboration amongst the coaches that we share the videos that we make so that way, information is spread equally amongst all of the elementary schools.
Good evening. I'm Angeline Tedesco. I'm the coach at Petway Elementary School. The last on the list here, which was mentioned, popcorn and a podcast. So we are supporting our teachers, and we want them to feel comfortable working with us and coming to us with anything. And one thing we thought was, how can we keep this still fun and light, yet relatable and educational for our staff members? So popcorn and a podcast kind of came to us, where an educational PD-related podcast where teachers can listen to at their own leisure, something that they can bring into their classroom. But we thought it was fun to kind of add, like, "Come to my office and grab a bag of popcorn with a QR code to a podcast." So we will be following up with this and discussing with our teachers, you know, is this something that you can use in your classroom? And if so, how can I help in supporting you implement these different sessions, whether it be PD-related? Again, but just keeping it fun and letting them know that we are their equal. We are here to support them in any way possible. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you all so much for sharing. I thought it was important for you to hear a little bit, you know, from their perspective of the resources that they've been building. And I do want to hit on, you know, the point that Linda said about all of the collaboration happening amongst the coaches. I know Mr. Yano's not here tonight, but I think one of the things he felt so strongly about was bringing together the elementary schools to be on one page and to be more comprehensive amongst each other. And I think that this is doing exactly that. And I know we're only one month in, and I am the forever optimist, but to have a spokesperson who's not our fabulous principals, because you guys have plenty on your plate, but to have somebody that they can all talk to one another and just hear what's going on in the other schools on an ongoing basis and being able to take a resource that's made and then push it out across the board, it's building consistency already, especially with the implementation of our new ELA curriculum. So I am very pleased and excited and want to, you know, just commend them for all the work they've done so far. So what happens next? So we are going to be focusing in on our instructional coaching cycles. So this is going to look a little bit more like individualized support and, you know, PD for each particular teacher. So this is all about identifying goals together, supporting, you know, the teacher in the implementation of whatever this goal might be. And as, I can't remember who said it before, that reflection piece, I think it was Dana, allowing time for teachers to be reflective in their practice, which is really where the change occurs, right? So spending a lot of time on this, facilitating PLCs. Most of our PLCs just took off this past week. Continuing that navigation around the inter-reading digital platform, which, you know, has been throwing us some curveballs here and there, but they are doing a phenomenal job in troubleshooting and supporting teachers the best way that they can. Additional resources and of course, the continuation of modeling lessons and just demonstrating different ways to utilize the resources we now have this school year. And that is it. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. And again, I'm just so thankful to have such an awesome group of people to work with. So it was nice, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our HIB report this evening. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Any questions or comments regarding the approval of the minutes? September 6th, 2023, combined meeting. September 13th, 2023, special meeting. Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Ms. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Ms. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Cottis Patti.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to committee reports this evening. Do I have any committee reports this evening? Ms. Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. The Facilities Committee met last Thursday, September 28th, at 4:30 PM. In attendance were Mrs. Cottis Patti, Mr. Mustarel, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Farinaccio, and myself. The first topic that was discussed was the, an update on the projects that have been budgeted. And these are the following updates: The Winslow Phase II HVAC delivery of equipment received on 9/28. Velazquez working on all the equipment installed by the end of the weekend, which is 10/1. Startup and setup will continue for the week of 10/2. Dan Barcy HVAC status is unchanged. The SR3 window project at VHS North are now completed, except for one window and a door. And the south wing, V wing, windows should be finished within two weeks in its entirety. Bids were received and approved at a September board meeting. Duran windows will be included for next summer's final SR3 monies. And we also got a district-wide camera project update. Phase II design work is almost finished. And the meeting is next, this Thursday and Friday, to finish up the specifications. This project should be approved at the November board meeting. We also discussed the technology department being now under the authority of Mr. Farinaccio and the administrative oversight, prioritization of work, projects, budgeting, immediate issues such as panic buttons, informcast issues and intercom issues. And we also discussed the chrono system that is currently used at the district for the punching in and punching out abilities. And that is all.
Any other committee report? Mr. Fiocchi.
Good evening. On October 2nd via Google Meet, the Finance Committee met. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Yano, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Silva, and myself. Following topics were discussed: Grants and aids, NJ Learning Acceleration Program tutoring, bids and RFPs, bus purchase financing, and district copiers. Preliminary budget calendar was presented for approval. New chrono system, personnel items, UAW contract that is on tonight's agenda. Vasta sidebar, Mr. Farinaccio taking over the technology department. Next, preliminary estimated increases for health benefits. And I think that's it. Also, Policy and Personnel met September 27th. In attendance was Mr. Yano, Ms. Acosta, Ms. Cottis Patti, Mr. Sabrana, Dr. Sneeth and Dr. Rossi, and myself. Following items were discussed: VHS principal finalists were brought to the meeting. COVID accommodation settlement, employee compensation for technology oversight, employee complaint. Following policies were discussed: sick leave policy and regulation and school threat assessment teams. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Holmes. Ms. Acosta.
Go ahead, ladies first.
On October 2nd, the Curriculum Instruction Committee met. In attendance were Mrs. DiMarchi, Dr. Sneethen, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Silva, and myself. We discussed the upcoming district in-service on November 7th and restorative practice professional development. We also discussed, very excited about this, a new CTE course of study for high school students. It's going to be the, it's going to begin, our goal is for the 24, 25 school year, and that would be a cybersecurity pathway in collaboration with RCSJ. What's exciting about this pathway is that students that choose to pursue cybersecurity can end up not only with professional certification, but also 32 college credits. We also discussed submission of the High Impact Tutoring Grant. We are hopeful that if we receive this grant, we will serve 3rd and 4th grade students with a focus on literacy and math. We discussed AMSA High School for the 2024 and 25 school year. We discussed board approvals for curriculum, professional development, and college affiliations. We discussed the instructional coaching model presentation that we saw just now. And that was basically it. Thank you.
Transportation Committee met Tuesday, October 3rd, 5:00 PM via Google Meet. In attendance were Mr. Mustarel, myself, Ms. Douglas, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Hall, and Ms. Dana Blakely. And we did a driver recap. Fiscal year 23, 24. There are 150 drivers budgeted, 140 route packages, which means drivers needed, down from 143. There are 133 field positions. Nine subs down from 15. Four drivers in training now from six. Absence average in the morning is 15.6. Averages in the afternoon are 16.7. Registrations are down to over 30. We discussed jointures, accidents. There were four in September. One was a driver error, and there were no injuries. We discussed student finder, wayfinder, the team concept. Our new Assistant Transportation Coordinator will start October 16th. We discussed buses. We are experiencing bus shortages due to accidents, breakdowns, and inspections. RFP for financing is going out later this month. We discussed Cumberland County Transportation Co-op increased route packages and times, sorry, increased route times due to driver shortages. We are moving forward to try to fine-tune around those stops. We discussed the RISE program implementation, and we have had to increase the number of bus aids due to the preschool providers not being able to allocate their aids as originally planned. Thank you.
Ms. Cottis Patti.
On September 18th, the Ad hoc Discipline Policy Committee met. Mr. Rivera, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Sabrana, Dr. Rossi, Dr. Sneethen, and Superintendent Yano were in attendance. We discussed, this is a new committee, and we're starting to discuss the policies for the discipline to see if there's something that we can change, something we can tweak. But our next meeting hopefully is going to be in November. I've asked for some statistics as to the discipline. And also, I'm going to ask possibly if we can get some of the principals into that meeting so maybe we can get an idea of what they might need or some kind of change that they might see that we're not seeing. Any kind of help with some of that would be great. So that's it.
Thank you. Public meeting report by our board solicitor.
None.
Moving on to public comment. On agenda items or any other matter, please limit yourself to three minutes. And we have the timer up here. Do we have some yellow sheets? Okay.
Jeff Lindsay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Lindsay. I'm representing Project Inspiration. And I'm coming here to address what's going on in Vineland High School. It was a lot of fights to start the year off. Through social media, I got to see actually what was going on firsthand. And within, if I'm not mistaken, the first five or six days, the first week, fights every day. It's on the internet. And it's just not one isolated fight. It's multiple people fighting throughout the day. So me, as an activist and a concerned parent, I couldn't sit back and just watch in the morning where kids just literally got off the bus and proceeded to fight. So I went out there to lend a hand, to help curb this. And I had a chance to run into Mr. Adams at this time. Me and him, we got in a dialogue and come to find out he was my son's first-grade teacher. Now, what else is concerning to me? My son was involved with one of the fights. And if you checked his record, he's straight A, college courses, heading on the right path. So now, once I seen that it was affecting the good kids too, this is when I said, you know what? This is a problem. It's not just an issue anymore. It's turned to a problem. Right after my son was expelled, fights were occurring again and again. Me and Mr. Adams, he called me in. We had an emergency meeting. What could we do with each other to assist each other? Now, before I go on, I know I only got three minutes. Mr. John Fuqua, they had incredible messengers were in there. Because that's the first thing I was like, well, where's the credible messengers? They're not in the building? The Satixists, when they were in the building, the fights were down. They're not in the building, the fights are back up. Now, before I proceed, these kids go to school, they're here to learn. No one should be concerned about if they're going to get punched or if they're going to have to fight today or to protect themselves, right? Not just the kids, the teachers too. How do we expect these teachers to operate on a high level? Or the kids at that point? How do we get them to operate at a high level to succeed if they're worried about safety? Teachers, how we expect them to sit in the classrooms to actually want to teach the kids if they have to be teachers slash referees slash all this other slash is going on? And then we're not getting the full, what the platform of school is for. The platform of school is for for these kids to come and get... these kids to come get an education. We don't want to make it like we're giving them a platform to come fight every day. So what I was saying to Mr. Adams was, it's mighty strange that you guys were tipped off about me. We got a tip about a guy that's going to come up here with a bullhorn and take back over Violin High School. They were ready for that. But they wasn't tipped off about these guys or girls or these kids that were going to be indulging in this activity?
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
I'm going to need you to finish up.
Yes, thank you. And like I said, these people are on the cusp of this. And since I do have to finish up quick, I'm not going to rush. I'm going to let my cousin come and give you guys some solutions to this. Because this, even with that, I know it's three minutes, but three minutes ain't going to solve this up, you see? So I'm going to abide by the three minutes that's here. But at the end of the day, there is no time limit on this. I know what you want me to do. Hurry up, Mr. Lindsay. I need you to wrap it up. Well, guess what I need you to do? To protect these kids. So we're not wrapping it up fast because that's the quick way, let's throw it through the thing. What are the solutions? What is this board? Because I know you guys had to hear about this. This is the most important thing that's on the board now. Safety first. Did you see what happened? You want to wrap it up? Did you see what happened today at a college? Murders. This is what's going on all across America right now. They're attacking our schools and our systems. So wrap it up? It sounds good, but we can't just wrap it up, miss. People are actually dying right now. So what do we have to do? Wait for one of our kids to die? Then we can wrap it up? That way? Into a body bag? So we did come up with some solutions. Mr. Adams, I don't know if you're going to get up here and speak about it. The superintendent that I wish was here, he's not here. But like I said, the three minutes is not going to get it. This is the problem. We have solutions. And I'm going to let other people step up. But listen, if you are a concerned parent, we have a pact too. It's called PAT. It's people and parents addressing concerns. If you are a concerned parent in here, I don't know if it's parents or teachers, if you're a concerned teacher or parent or person, and you want to see some changes done, please get in contact with my cousin Jacoby, me, Mr. John Fuqua, and Mr. Adams. We want to work vigorously so these kids all can get what they're going to school for. It's an education, all right? And then hopefully, when next time we wrap it up per se, we'll be wrapping it up on a good note. Because like I said, it's easy for them to say, "Wrap it up." It's easy for them to tell us the time limit, and then we listen to it. But the kids, they're not listening. The kids ain't wrapping it up.
Sir?
The kids is fighting. I hear you, miss.
Excuse me?
Three minutes. The kids ain't wrapping it up. So y'all, I see you, sir. Do you work at Violin High School? Now, do you work at Violin High School? Do you work at Violin High School? So are you out there in a fight school room? Or are you out there in a fight school room?
See his face? Sir, please step back. Thank you. That's all the sheets I have. Would anybody else like to speak? Please, your name and your address. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jacoby Lindsay, the founder and executive director of Project Inspiration. Just to speak on, you know, real quick on what he was trying to touch on, you know, his passion, because his child was involved, so we have to show a level of understanding for that. So, you know, we can understand where he's coming from, and we want passion like that from all of the parents, you know, in the community. One of the points that he stated out was when organizations like Credible Messenger, you know, and things of that nature are involved with the kids, you know, we actually meet the kids where they're at. And when we meet the kids where they're at, it allows them to, you know, have a sense of, you know, self-comfortability or hope that, you know, we are trying to listen to what it is that they have in mind, the things that they have interest in. We know that, you know, school curriculums are governed by certain standards, and we have to follow by certain things. We know and understand that. But the interests of the youth, their interests are different than ours were when we were their age, because the times are changing. So, you know, as he mentioned, organizations like Credible Messenger, Project Inspiration, you know, we come forth and we engage the youth in things that they already have interest in. And then from that point, we show them how to turn those particular things into a career path, you know. And, you know, that's just basically it. For in-depth conversation, you know, we'll just take the time out to speak to whom we need to speak with to further this conversation. So with all due respect for time for all those on the panel and everyone here, again, Jacoby Lindsay, Project Inspiration, and I look forward to, you know, playing our part in doing what we have to do to inspire the youth.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Albert Porter, and I'd just like to thank you for honoring our kids from Violin High School African-American Experience classes. The project they worked on is naming the street Dr. Martin Luther King Way, which will be a celebration next Wednesday by the City of Vineland. And by you taking the opportunity to honor Generation Z is very, very important. There are a lot of good kids out there, and I just want to thank you for taking that opportunity to acknowledge those kids. We had one young man that couldn't get away from the college because he's playing basketball at Rowan College of South Jersey. But I just want to thank you on behalf of myself, and I'll let them talk for a second.
I just wanted to thank you, Board of Education, for the opportunity of having the ownership of this. And this is a thing that will go down in history, and I'm glad to be in the history books for it.
On behalf of my grandson, who's at the college and couldn't get away, he was torn between two opinions, whether he should stay at the college or come on out. But he wants to play basketball, so he chose basketball. But he wanted to say thank you for everyone that has, you know, given them a chance, all the children a chance to have a voice, and to, and then to grant them the honor to change the name of a street in Vineland to Dr. Martin Luther King Way. I am ecstatic over it, and I thank you so much on his behalf.
One last thing. There will be honor on Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday this year, 2024, on January 15th by Violin African-American Community Development Corporation as well.
Thank you. We'd like to get a picture, and we did recognize the other students that were here in the beginning of the ceremony.
Good evening. I'm John Fuqua, Executive Director of Lifeworth Living. My address is 77 Arilla Drive, Bridgeston, New Jersey. I just want to touch base for 30 seconds, maybe. I want to applaud the leadership of Violin Board of Education first and foremost. Also want to acknowledge the leadership of Mr. Yanos. We've been in conversation with him for the last couple of weeks in regard to the opportunity for us to return to the school. I know you guys are going to vote, hopefully vote on that tonight. I understand Mr. Lindsay's position as a father who was stressed out. We share some of the same concerns, looking at those videos that were posted. We know we live in an era right now where instead of us breaking stuff up and we being bystanders and we're recording. We want to do better. Given that opportunity to get back into school, one of the things that we're going to be pushing to our young people is the importance of not being bystanders. That's something that we being caught up in in our society. Remember, social media pay kids to give the most outlandish videos. It's opportunities for them to make money so they don't know any better. So as the adults in the room, and as the gardeners of this generation, and as the people that should be guiding them, it's going to be one of our responsibilities to show them how to do better. So I look forward to that. And I also know that some of these choices are difficult. Everybody going to have different opinions of who should be talking to our kids and who should be giving them advice. But at this point, it's going to take all of us on the will because of, as we can see, and we look around with the, like I said, Mr. Lindsay had a couple of good points. We want our teachers to feel safe, and we want our students to feel safe. And the stuff that we saw in those videos is not a reflection of your leadership. It's not a reflection of the leadership of their parents. Those kids made bad choices. And with more hands on the wheel, we can help guide them. So thanks for my, listening to my spiel. Y'all have a good night.
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Victor Jimenez. I am a lead Credible Messenger, resident of Violin, New Jersey, 225 West Park Avenue. First and foremost, I want to thank the Board and the leadership, Mr. Yanos and his leadership. And I walked in towards the end of Mr. Lindsay's spiel. I do understand his passion. I do understand his concerns. I believe we all across board have the same concerns. I believe the violence is something that we have to address. But I believe this leadership is going to do a great job. We, I spoke in depth with several Board members. There was some positives that transpired last year with us being in a school, a lot of positives. But there was also some few negatives that we ourselves in a professional manner need to clean up, and we are looking forward to getting the opportunity to adjust those wrongs. The connectivity that we had, the connection we had with each student is uncanny. If you walk in the hallways, I happened to be in Violin High School Friday to do a follow-up with a couple of students, and the students were in the hallway screaming, asking when we're coming back. I do want to share that to those who don't understand. This is, it's a two-way thing, and I spoke about this on my live. It's not only to deter and to connect with the students. It's also to bring a safe place for the teachers. Last year's violence was high. Many, many teachers were uncomfortable with the violence. Having us in the hallway, definitely deterring a lot of things, made more teachers comfortable and safe in the hallway. We want to be able to bring a peaceful environment for the students and staff. So it can flow cohesive. So then, the students can have all the attention from staff, and then the staff can have all the attention from the students. We are looking forward to hopefully getting back into the schools. And again, we do honor the Board. We thank you and Mr. Yanos and his leadership. Have a wonderful night.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing none. Motions and resolutions. I need a motion to remove the Board's motion on September 6, 2023, that tabled the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of the acting principals at Violin High School. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Abstain.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries 801.
Superintendent recommendations for discussion and approval by the Board, consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Request for discussion and approval of personal items 1.1 to 1.4. 1.1: retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment transfers. B: students. C: substitutes. D: extracurricular activities. E: extracurricular summer. And F: volunteers. 1.2: Department of Labor-funded New Jersey Youth Corps staff salary increase of 2.9%, respectively retroactive to July 1, 2023. 1.3: collective bargaining unit agreement with United Word Auto Workers Local 2327. 1.4: memorandum of sidebar agreement between the City of Vineland Board of Education and the Vineland Administrators and Supervisors Association, VASA.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Under 1.1, under the promotion tab, no to 11933, employee number. Yes to the other two.
Hold on. Okay, on promotions, no to which one?
11933.
Item four.
Item four. Yes to the other two items under that tab.
Okay.
Yes to everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Silva? I'm sorry. Mr. Sabrana?
Yes, and I want to explain my vote. Voting no on numbers four and six on promotions, not as any criticism of the nominees, but because it's the only way for me to put forth my objection on naming a principal for each high school building. This was a model that was tried before and failed because of apparently insurmountable challenges with budgeting, teacher sharing, high-level academics, and associated travel between buildings, and numerous extracurricular activities, especially performing arts and music. Yes on everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes to all, no to employee number 11933.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would our new Violin High School principals like to come to the podium and say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jaclyn Alvarez. I am the administrator, the new principal of Vineland High School South. It is an exciting time for Vineland High School. I am extremely thankful to Mr. Yano, the Vineland Board of Ed, Central Administration, our administrative team, and our amazing staff who has executed a wonderful liftoff to Vineland High this year. I am extremely eager and excited, as a former alumnus of this school, to be serving our community. It is with great pride and privilege that I take upon this role seriously and with great passion to ensure that our students and our Vineland community continues to thrive. So I ask of you today to get involved, and let's get to it. Go Vineland.
Sorry for the small child outburst here. Justin Adams, newly appointed principal of the Tanner Building. I just wanted to thank the Board, Mr. Yano from a remote location, and the rest of the interview committee for the nomination. It's humbling. It's honoring. We put a lot of work in. We put a lot of work in, Ms. Alvarez and I, since the, kind of the middle of August, when this process started and became a reality for us. And whether it was, you know, a 4 o'clock phone call that my wife walked in on and asked me who I was talking to, or a 7 o'clock meeting that we had to hold, we've done as best we can to show our staff, and more importantly, our students and our community, that we're here to lead. You know, we have a commitment to the district. The process was a little bit frustrating at some points, but, you know, portrait of a graduate, we persevere. You know, we adapt. We overcome everything. To my wife out there, and to little Miss Mela here, they've been my support system, and that's how I see Ms. Alvarez and I kind of communicating and running Violin High School. You know, we are one campus. We are one Violin High School. And for the first and maybe only time, go Violin, beat Movo.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Ms. Alvarez.
Congratulations, Ms. Alvarez, Mr. Adams. Discussion and approval of procedures and operations 2.1 to 2.9. 2.1, trips, VHS proposal for softball spring training trip 2024 and district travel. 2.2, a resolution approving the dates and times, places of monthly board meetings per the list provided and on file with the board secretary. 2.3, adopting the 2023-2024 budget preparation calendar. 2.4, the following curricula items as listed below. 2.5, the following evaluation templates which is on file with the secretary of the board as listed below. 2.6, authorizing the board secretary to enter into affiliation agreement with Atlantic Cape Community College and Keene University for the 2023-2024 school year at zero cost. 2.7, the NJ4S resolution whereas the, the Violin School District Board of Education supports ASCENDA Integrated Health in its efforts to partner with the New Jersey Department of Children and Families. 2.8, revised policy 1642.01, sick leave with waiver of second reading. 2.9, the following superintendent's goals for the 2023-2024 school year as listed below.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes to all, abstain 2.7.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
There are no items for buildings and grounds. Request discussion and approval of finance items 4.1 to 4.9. 4.1, budgetary transfers of general school-based and grants for June 2023 final, July 2023 revised, and August 2023. 4.2, the Board of Education accepts the board secretary report and verifies that the treasurer report is in accordance with NJSA 18A for the month ending June, July, and August 2023. 4.3, the placement of special education students. 4.4, to submit the following grant applications, New Jersey Learning Acceleration Program, High Impact Tutoring Grant, Early Learning Network Improvement Community NIC Support Plan. 4.5, the acceptance of grants funds from the New Jersey Department of Health administered by the Atlantic Care Foundation for the Veterans Memorial Middle School. 4.6, the following aid for 2023-2024 school year as listed below. 4.7, the comprehensive maintenance plan as listed below. 4.8, the annual maintenance reserve deposit worksheet form M dash one indicating the required deposit for the 2023-2024 budget. 4.9, the home instruction agreement between the City of Violin Board of Education and Brookfield Schools in the form acceptable by the board solicitor and the superintendent to provide home instruction for students hospitalized or enrolled in the IN program for a step ahead.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty? I apologize. Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Request discussion and approval of finance items 4.9 to 4.18. 4.10, professional development in the amount of $33,245 provided by the Beable Education. 4.11, professional development in the amount of $4,000 provided by staff development workshops to be presented at the November 7th, 2023 Staff Workshop Day. 4.12, professional development in the amount of $1,522 provided by SRI and ETTC. 4.13, strategic planning 3D model contract between the City of Violin Board of Education and the New Jersey School Boards Association. 4.14, life worth living contract for a Violin High School student support program effective October 10, 2023 through December 21st, 2023. 4.15?
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Excuse me, in a form acceptable to the board solicitor?
Yes, and acceptable.
And the superintendent?
And the superintendent, thank you.
It's a conditional approval.
4.15, 2023-2024 itinerant shared service agreement between Gloucester County Special Services School District and Violin Public Schools District Board of Education for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. 4.16, 2023-2024 joint transportation agreement between Camden County Educational Services Commission and the City of Violin Board of Education in the amount of $12,180 and 60 cents. 4.17, addendum to the 2022-2024 agreement of the inter-local participation in joint transportation with the Millville Board of Education, Comer County Regional Cooperative. 4.18, settlement agreement between the City of Violin Board of Education and a former employee, number 9867, whose name is on file with the board, board secretary.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes on all, but I must abstain from 4.14. As a community leader, a educational consultant, and pastor, I've worked with the group, Life Worth Living.
Ms. Fioc, Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations to Life Worth Living for coming back into the high school and helping us out through these challenging times. Regular agenda, seeing none. Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members, discussion and approval of the 2023-2024 board goals as noted on, on your agenda, do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval of itemized bill pay list for June 2023 final, July 2023 revised, August 2023. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Emergent items with prior approval, none. Any old business this evening? None. Any new business this evening? None. Board member remarks, please limit yourself to five minutes and starting with Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the students from DePaulito and Rossi that came out and led us in the flag salute. I'd like to congratulate and commend the students that through their project, the City of Violin decided to name a street after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. A great man, a great inspiration, great example of who should we all be today. To Mr. Lindsay and the other parents that are concerned about the safety at the high school in particular, but in, in the district overall. I can, I can, I can relate and I can understand the passion. So, I'm not gonna knock Mr. Lindsay for his, for his passion and for his, you know, the way he expressed himself tonight. As a dad, I can understand that. And as a dad and with kids in this district, I can understand that. My belief is that the, the problem is a multifaceted, we need a multifaceted solution, a multi-pronged solution. And the community, parents, teachers, the students themselves, this board, administration are all part of this solution. We should all be part of this solution. It's why I always implore parents to get involved. Parents, it starts at home. Yes, we have your kids for those eight hours at, at the, at the school. It starts at home and we need you as well. We need you involved. We need you to, to, to express to your children how important it is for them to get an education. We'll take care of them when they're in the schools. We'll take care of their education. We'll take care of their safety when they're in schools, but we need you guys as well. We need the community, members of the community that don't have kids in this, in the school system, members of the community that just have a passion for our children. We need you. We need organizations like Life Worth Living, sending, giving us their expertise. We need pastors, we need clergy, we need rabbis, we need imams, we need everybody. We need everybody. It's all hands on deck approach in order for us to get this situation solved. And I believe we can do it. And I believe that, that Violin has the people, Violin has the passion, Violin has the love for our children. So, I believe that we're gonna do it. It may not seem that, like that right now, but I believe we're gonna do it. So, I wanna thank everybody, everybody that wants to get involved, everybody that has stepped up and got involved already. Thank you. We appreciate your help. A couple of important dates that are coming up, August 28th, we have early voting, so from August 28th to November 5th. Excuse me, I wish it was August, right? October 28th to November 5th, early voting. Get out and vote, November 7th, Election Day, get out and vote. We have some important races going on this year and we need every single person who's eligible to vote to go and vote. And just we, I, I wanna continue to wish a, much success to this entire school district, a continued success for the next months to come. We got a lot of things coming up and I'm excited to see what this year brings. So, with that being said, thank you so much, have a great evening, and good night.
Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you to our students from DePaulito and Rossi for leading the flag salute. The high school students who are working to recognize Dr. King, and also to Mrs. DiMarci and Mrs. Ziegler for that very, very nice presentation. To Mr. Adams and Ms. Alvarez, I've worked with Jackie for quite a number of years, Justin for not, not too long, but I wish you both the best of luck. I hope you understand my vote was a matter of principle and not of, of fact, and I'm hopeful that you will get all the support that you need to be successful. And if you ever need to talk to anyone, call me. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, I'd like to thank the DePaulito School and Rossi School students for the flag salute, Mr. Porter and his VHS African-American Experience students who have helped with this great initiative. Mr. Marci and Ms. Ziegler, thank you for your presentation and keeping us updated on the instructional coaching model. I'm looking forward to hearing all about the positive feedback in regards to the support you will provide to our teachers and our, in their practices. Mr. Adams and Ms. Alvarez, I would like to congratulate you guys. I am looking forward to hearing great things at the high school. We can only go up from, from here. So, I wish you the best and we're all here to provide you the support that you need. Thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi?
I just wanna congratulate Ms. Alvarez and Mr. Adams. I know you guys are both gonna do a great job and looking forward to it. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, thank you to our flag saluters from Rossi and DePaulito. Thank you to Mrs. DiMarci and Mrs. Ziegler and the new instructional coaches for the presentation this evening. Congratulations to Mr. Porter and his African-American Experience class, looking forward to that ceremony next week. UAW's in the house, thank you. We're glad after a long process, we came to an agreement. VASA's in the house for something other than contract increases, so thank you for being here as well tonight. VHS, VHS is the biggest operation in our school district and that is probably most of the reason why this process has, you know, been scrutinized, it's been controversial and different things have been coming out, gossip, rumor, some of it is politics, politi, whatever it might be. But again, VHS is, is the biggest operation and we need to stand behind it. Ms. Alvarez, Mr. Adams, you know, whatever, however the votes go at any point in time, we stand behind you and we're going to support you because your success is our success, just like our superintendent as well. Your success is our success. So, whatever you need from this board, from this administration, I believe that you'll receive those resources and that support to make the high school successful. As Mr. Lindsay pointed out, in whatever way that came out, it's passion and we need to have change there. There are a lot, lot of issues that need to be addressed there and I believe that you will receive the support and resources needed to make those changes and move the high school into a positive direction. Thank you all for being here tonight. If you ever have any questions, we are available to answer those. Thanks.
Ms. Acosta?
Good evening. I too would love to thank the students from Rossi and from DePaulito, our flag saluters. It's always such a welcome opportunity to see some of our students here at the board meeting. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Porter's students. I think it's a great example of how our students can actually make positive differences and working together, they can see the outcome as something so important as recognizing one of our great leaders, Dr. Martin Luther King. Mrs. DiMarci, thank you so much. I have to say that the educational coaches, I can see their passion, it's wonderful to see their enthusiasm. I just, I really, I have to say I've received a lot of positive feedback from teachers, particularly, particularly some newer teachers who have indicated that the educational coach in their school has really helped them. So, when I hear that, I know we're on the right track. It's wonderful to see everybody working together. To Mrs. Alvarez and, well, first of all, I am so very happy to see you in position of principal for the 1112 building. Sometimes, when we look back and we imagine what our future's gonna be, I don't know if you thought when you were in high school that you would be sitting in the position of Violin High School, but basically to see someone sort of basically homegrown, come back and serve our community with the passion and commitment that you've shown, I am very grateful, I feel very proud, and I know that you're going to do a wonderful job in your With respect to Mr. Adams, Mr. Adams, I love your enthusiasm. I know based on what I have been able to see and hear, I know that you are the type of person, you seem hands-on, I can see you right there with the students, with the teachers. I think that for our 910 building, you're going to be a wonderful principal. You're gonna lead by example, you're gonna be walking the halls, you're gonna be communicating with parents. I, I am just very, very happy that you will be joining the ranks of principal in the 910 building. I know some of my board members and myself, maybe we have some differences, whether there should have been one principal or two principals, but I personally like the idea of having a principal onsite in each building. I think it leads to just more immediate responses and the ability to be able to, obviously, I can see that the two of you collaborate wonderfully. So, I think it's gonna be a really wonderful thing for Violin High School to have both of you. a really wonderful thing for Violin High School to have both of you as committed and passionate as you are for the success of our students. So thank you very much. And I think that's it.
Mrs. Douglas.
I'd like to say thank you to the Safety Patrol from DePaulito and Rossi. I remember being a safety, so it's always sweet to remember those fond memories, and thank you to the parents that were so supportive in bringing them out and staying with them until they completed the leading of the pledge allegiance. I'd also like to say thank you to the instructional coaches. I hope that you continue to focus on communication and accountability. It is nice to have someone that understands what you're going through and that can support you in the whole process. I'd also like to say congratulations to the students that worked with the city and city council and African-American Studies, the four students that were able to make sure that they were a part of history in naming or dedicating a street in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and it will be called the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. I really want to say congratulations to Ms. Alvarez and Mr. Adams. I want to encourage you to, to, to stick to your guns about working together. You're leading by example, and let's make a joke out of the naysayers. It is doable. It is possible for you to work together and make sure that there's an atmosphere that's conducive to learning and leadership, and you're leading now. So I wish you all the best, and you have our support. I'd also like to say I love how there's been a lot of student recognition, parent involvement, community involvement, so I do want to say congratulations to Life Worth Living. I think there's more that you have to offer. And again, like the other members have shared, it is important that all hands are on deck. We, we want to use a holistic approach to finding solutions that are best for everyone, so we can create a safe learning environment that people actually want to come to and enjoy. So to everyone, thank you so very much, thank you for attending, and I wish you the best evening.
Thank you. Ms. Cottis Potty.
First, I'd like to echo the sentiments of all of my board members. I want to thank everybody who came out, come out to speak tonight. We do understand, we do hear you, and we are working to try to help things, and we're going to be working with the schools and with administration as far as the disciplinary issues, so hopefully we can get that under control. Thank you to DePaulito and Rossi Safety Patrol for the flag salute, to our retirees, there's 137 years of retirees, so I want to congratulate them for their dedication to the district. Congratulations to the students of the Violin High School African-American Studies. I'm excited that they are, have worked with the council and the city to have this street named for Dr. Martin Luther King. Ms. Alvarez and Mr. Adams, congratulations. I want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Sabrana and Mr. Holmes, where a lot of it was on policy or principle, and we are here for you no matter what. We are a board together, so whatever you need. I want to thank you guys, though, because you stepped up and you have been running the schools, along with several other APs for the two schools, so thank you, thank them. I want to do a shout-out to Ms. Quinn and Ms. Arena and the other interns that have helped you guys out over there. Thank you so much. I wish everybody a good night, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Fry.
Thank you. I know I already said congratulations to Jackie and Justin, but when Ms. Acosta was speaking about knowing Jackie when she was in high school, yeah, I saw it, Ms. Acosta, yeah, she's a leader, and no doubt about it. So I also knew Jackie when she was in high school. Justin, for the short time, like Mrs. Sabrana said, I've known you, you've shown true leadership skills, and I appreciate it. And I want to thank both of you for applying, sticking in there, and ultimately receiving the nomination. Thank you. I'm happy Mr. Yano and central administration also, he wanted to make sure, so I thank Mr. Porter and the students who spearheaded the initiative, and make sure that you know we will be there for the, for the groundbreaking, for the supporting the ceremony. He also wanted to thank the Board of Education for their support in supporting the decision for high school principal, as well as he wanted to provide some highlights for the Board of Education and the public. Our back-to-school nights have been a great success so far this year. Each school provides information and engaging activities for families and students, and gives positive insight into what we expect for a great school year to be. The VHS Marching Clan is having a great season. In addition to entertaining our crowds at football games and other district events, they recently placed first in the annual Wildwood Fireman's Parade, and third, this past weekend's Cavalcade of Bands competition. They next compete in Millville this Saturday. Violin High School held its annual club night on September 21st and had another great turnout. Dozens of clubs, community, and athletic representatives were on hand to help get our students involved in extracurricular activities. We're a little more than halfway through Hispanic Heritage Month, and our schools have been celebrating and honoring our Hispanic backgrounds through many fun and innovative activities. Some upcoming events that are, that are on the horizon, Homecoming will be next weekend, October 14th. The annual parade down Lanis Avenue will start at 11:30 with the football game versus Egg Harbor Township starting at 1:00 p.m. Miss Monogram will be crowned at halftime. The first bilingual advisory committee meeting will be held on October 18th at 6:00 p.m. at Sabater Elementary School. Our district event calendar is also available on the front page of our new website, and is kept up to date, so our families and community won't miss any events, any of the district events. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Thank you to all of our students, faculty, staff, families that came out, that came out tonight. Thank you to our instructional coaches and Ms. DiMarchi. It was really enlightening to see all the work that you were doing. You know, in the beginning of the year, Mr. Yano really had to sell his vision on the instructional coaches to the board, so it's nice to see the, the work that you guys are doing and how things are really coming together, so I really appreciate that. Again, thank you to our new Violin High School principals. You definitely have your work cut out for you. Thank you for being patient with the board through, you know, the process. Me and Ms. Cottis Potty did have the privilege of sitting in on the interviews, and it was a very eye-opening experience. And thanks to all the candidates who applied multiple times and putting their hat in the ring. So on that note, I am going to adjourn the meeting, and I wish that everyone has a great evening and a great weekend. Thank you. Adjourned. Do I have a motion?